Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our reading to order. Can we all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a pledge to the right of the United States of America. We do it for all of our citizens, on one nation, under one God, in the name of this world, with liberty and justice for all. Sandy, will you call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Here.
Trustee Sheehan?
Here.
Trustee Casera?
Here.
Trustee Lotner?
Here.
Trustee Zora?
Here.
Trustee Seidel?
Here.
President DiCipio?
Here.
A quorum is present, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sandy. It's a privilege to be up here.
Probably not.
It would be on.
Okay. Like I said, it's a privilege to be up here because tonight we're going to honor an individual who's been a big part of our community for 45 years. It's hard to imagine some of our board members weren't even born when Martin started working here, but Martin is the Grange Park. He's our community. I served as board's commissioner for the park district. Trustee Lotner served as a commissioner of the park district. And we go way back, and Martin was here at the beginning with Billy Yena. I see a lot of park board members, commissioners that are current commissioners and past commissioners in the audience tonight. I'm here for Martin since we're recognizing someone that has been an influential part of our community for 45 years. If you've ever gone through the parks, do you see how beautiful they are? We have a great park district. They do a wonderful job, the staff and the maintenance workers, the board. We have a great board of park district. But the one mainstay that has been here consistently throughout the years has been Martin, and there's a reason for that. He's professional. He's got great integrity. He's honest. He's passionate about the Grange Park and about achieving our parks so that we are. He's honest. Great individual that has been a privilege to be around. His wife Donna has been by his side the whole time. They live in Western Springs. Martin was hired in 1974. I had just graduated high school at the time. When you graduate, you just graduated grammar school, I think. But he takes great pride in our parks and the way they've looked and the positive changes that have come about over the years. He has served under, I don't know, 70 to 100 commissioners. I know five or six executive directors he's served under. He's been through everything, the renovation of the parks, the tennis courts, inline hockey, you name it. Martin's had his hand in it. If anyone here knows the history of the park district, Billy Yena and his wife started it back in the day, and I think Martin, you were one of the first hires that came on. He will be missed by the residents of the Grange Park. He will be missed by the park district. Again, I'm going to have Trustee Lotner say a few things, because I can't say enough of this individual, of this man, who's been a part of our community for 45 years. I mean, take grasp of that. Forty-five years in one place has got to say something about the character of the individual that we're going to honor tonight. Trustee Lotner?
President, Dr. DiCipio. I feel honored to be able to make a couple of comments about you as well, Martin, and like to share with the audience a little bit of my experience with you, and that actually goes back to, I think, the late '80s, early '90s, when I first became involved in the Little League. And I quickly learned that if you wanted to get something done on the fields, Martin was the guy you had to go to. And it was always very dependable that he was going to be the one that could always make it happen, the one you could always, always depend upon. And when I did actually become a park district commissioner, which was in the late 1900s, early 2000s. Was it that long that we were there? The late 1900s.
Close enough.
And I realized that the dependability and the contributions that you made to this village and to the park district went well beyond just the baseball fields that I saw. And I had the opportunity during the time that I was on the park board and worked with you to see just all the things that we could always depend upon you, making sure that our fields and our parks, that everything was just in top-notch, pristine condition to represent our village. I got to know you, Martin, and your wife Donna a little bit better during that time. It's when I learned we had mutual affinity to classic cars, a lot of story sharing in that regard, also our downstate connections. Still a downstater, and Donna is as well, so we had a few conversations about life in downstate Illinois as well. I think everyone here will probably agree that our parks in the village is one of the things that you always think about, well, what does the Grange Park represent and what do we have here to offer to raise families? And the condition of our parks has always been one of the top things mentioned as why you might want to consider the Grange Park to raise your family. And Martin, you're a very key part of helping us represent that to the residents, so that we're very much appreciated. But I just want to say good luck to you and Donna as you begin your journey into this next phase of your life. And as I always say to people that are about ready to retire, I encourage you to treat every night like it's Friday night, every day like it's Saturday, and I predict that you'll find that Sunday nights are the absolute best. Congratulations. Thank you for all that you've done for this village and for the park district over the years, and the best to you and Donna in your retiring years ahead. Thank you very much.
Again, I'd be remiss to get on that stress of the appointments of Martin. We have two past executive directors at the time, who came in, who flew in, who's a past commissioner, and who has done the park district and the village of the Grange Park, who has worked on Little League and always contributed. Pete Stardeck, who has served on the board, who has come in, all the commissioners that are here today, and so it's a true testament to you, Martin, for what we feel about you. So if you would please come up, with Donna and the two, please. So we all know behind a man is a good woman. So Donna, this is to the village board and the village staff, and we've been allowing us to have Martin for the last 45 years in our community.
Martin, to you, with great appreciation, Martin Healy, superintendent, community park district of the Grange Park, 1974, 2019. Thank you for over 45 years of service to the village of the Grange Park.
Martin, I can't thank you enough, we have the village board and the staff and everyone here present. Thank you for all you've given us. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank everybody, especially the board, for having me here tonight. It's a great pleasure. I love working in the park district of the Grange Park, and I love everybody in the Grange Park, work with our department, Public Works. Glad to see Rick back. Good luck to you, Rick. Rick and I go back a long way, and I needed something. Rick was always there for me. All I had to say was, "Rick, I need help." "What do you need?" He was there. And we have a great community here. I'll certainly miss it. And I'll be around, hope to see everybody, and again, thank the board for having me here tonight. And thanks to see everybody here for me. It's wonderful. Whoop. Wow. Alex, good to see you. Hello? Jeff? Everybody? Bob? Karen? Everybody? Lloyd? Thank you. And nice to see my staff back here. Ray and Billy and Matt. Thank you. And again, nice to everybody. Thank you very much, guys.
Okay, videos of that presentation will be for sale after the meeting. We'll split, Martin, okay?
Okay.
But again, thank you for all your service. Okay, moving on. Public participation of agenda and non-agenda related items only. Would anyone care to address the board? Okay, seen none, we'll move on. Administration Committee? Trustee Seidel?
I have one item tonight for discussion and action regarding the village boardroom sound system. The sound system in the village boardroom is no longer functioning reliably and needs to be replaced. The system is over 30 years old, and the existing wiring, speakers, and associated equipment cannot be reused due to the advancements in technology. The village has worked with our IT consultant, All Information Services, to design a new sound system that will be reliable and provide increased functionality and better meet the needs of the village. Staff recommends the village install a large display screen in the boardroom to be used for presentations during village board meetings and for large staff training. The installation of the display screen will eliminate the need for the mobile projector and screen. The display will also provide enhanced image clarity, making it easier for audience members and cable television viewers to view presentations. AIS has prepared a quote for the new sound system, which includes removing the existing wiring and hardware, purchasing the new equipment and installation. The quote also includes additional items, noted as optional, recommended by village staff, including new wireless microphones, lapel microphones, and a wireless charging system. The total estimated cost is $29,502.20. AIS has prepared a separate quote for the purchase and installation of a large 86-inch display screen and associated mounting equipment in a cost of $7,785.40. AIS has been the village's IT consultant for over a decade and is familiar with the village's network and cable equipment. Competitive bidding is not likely to result in a lower cost, as other companies will require additional labor to familiarize themselves with the village's network systems. As the sound system and display screen will be integrated into the village's existing IT network, staff recommends waiving the competitive bidding process. Due to the complexity of the project, staff recommends including a 10% contingency for unforeseen costs. The cost of the new sound system and display screen with the contingency is $41,000, which will be covered by a grant from the West Central Cable Agency. This item is for both discussion and action. I make motion to waive the formal bidding process and to approve the purchase and installation of a new sound system and display screen for the village boardroom from All American Services in the amount not to exceed the $41,000.
Have a motion to a second?
Second.
Discussion. Trustee Seidel?
I am all in favor. Obviously, we've all seen the issues that we have experienced, so this is definitely an important thing to have to prepare for reliability and for the viewers watching it on TV.
Any other comments from the board? Trustee Lotner?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was, first of all, was going to ask if we needed it absolutely right away, and as we discovered, we've had a lot of issues with this for a long time. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, is, you know, what's the amount that's budgeted for this year? That would be the first question. And then the second question is, how critical, significant is it to waive the, you know, the competitive bidding process? That concerns me a little bit, so I'd like to hear some commentary on that a little bit as well. And then the third item, just as a clarification to make sure that the motion is appropriate, I need to make sure that it does say All Information Services, AIS.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Emily?
With regard to the budget, this item is actually not budgeted for this year, and that is because the full cost of the project will be paid for through a grant with the West Central Cable Agency. So you may recall that the village of the Grange Park is one of the five members of the West Central Cable Agency, and that agency helps support and fund projects and items that help us provide cable programming to the community. And because the sound system is obviously integral to being able to film these meetings and make these meetings available to the public, not only through the cable channel but also through our website, it is something that the cable agency would support. I have actually discussed this with the cable agency. They have seen the preliminary numbers, and they have all expressed their preliminary support for the project. It is a reimbursement-based project, so once the project is complete, we provide the invoices to the agency, and then the agency will reimburse us.
Thank you. That obviously is a great answer. No question that if we don't go out to competitive bid, that that might have an impact on the grant consideration?
It will not, no. I believe three of the member communities of the WCCA use AIS as well as their IT consultant, and AIS typically does the projects for them as well. So they are well aware of the process that we're going through to move forward with the project, and they find it acceptable. I guess we did budget $50,000 for it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. Any other questions from the board? Seen none, Sandy, call the roll?
Trustee Messick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sandy. Moving on. Building and zoning committee, Trustee Zora?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item for discussion, and then following my background, there'll be a presentation. The last time the village's building code and fire codes were substantially updated was 1999, in 2003. The majority of the village's current codes are contained in standalone documents in which various model codes were adopted, including a combination of those published originally by the building officials and code administrators and the National Fire Protection Association. The building and fire departments have undertaken a review of the most current model reference codes to determine applicability in the village. Our primary objective in this effort was to make the village of the Grange Park municipal code as reasonable as possible, incorporating more modern building and fire codes. This helps ensure that all of our buildings and their occupants are kept safe as reasonably as possible. Staff is recommending adoption of the 2015 International Code family and the 2014 National Electrical Code with amendments. The state of Illinois has also adopted certain codes that the village is requiring to enforce, so staff recommends adoption of the 2015 Illinois Energy Conservation Code, 2014 Illinois Plumbing Code, and 2018 Accessibility Code. In addition to these new models, reference codes, staff is recommending a number of local amendments to the codes. These personalize the codes to a more accurately reflect existing needs and conditions in the village. During this process, staff has contemplated possible conflicts regarding the impact of the proposed codes on both current and future development. The recommendation of staff is that the proposed new building and fire codes, along with the subsequent amendments, be adopted and approved, and they will be presenting now.
Okay. Thank you. As you know, or as you probably have heard over quite some time, we've been contemplating updating our codes for a number of reasons. Some of the things that have happened in the last several years is, obviously, we were lucky enough to restructure the building department, change the title of our full-time person, which is Patrick, the building official and deputy building commissioner, and also we've outsourced some of our property maintenance code enforcement. So as we did that, we have had more time to start to work on this project, which was kind of a work in progress for quite a long time to where we just were not ready to move forward. Patrick is going to do most of the presentation. He has done a lot of work on this project, the majority of the work, so I'm going to turn it over to Patrick, and then we'll have a brief summary at the end.
What's the projector?
So like I said, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick. He's all ready to give it a whirl, right?
What's the slows?
Where do we get the new one, huh?
It's baby night.
What's going on?
Slowly.
Thank you, chief. Evening, everyone. As you mentioned, obviously, we have been going through the process for quite some time to update the building and fire codes. And basically, we put together a brief presentation to walk you through that process. A little background on what we have currently adopted. This is what was adopted in 2003. The codes you see listed here, these were all adopted in standalone documents that are referenced in the ordinance, regulating permit processes, construction standards, and general guidelines. To put it in perspective, the bulk of codes that you see listed here are no longer published, and most of these codes were created when I was a junior in high school. The bulk organization was one of many regional publishers throughout the nation. Over time, to avoid duplication and solid code development, those organizations merged into the ICC, the International Code Council. 1997, they created a uniform building code with regional limitations, without regional limitations, and later created a set of model codes that are widely used throughout the nation today, the most widely used code today. Fire code also adopted in 2003 in a separate standalone document referenced in the ordinance was adopted at that time. This included specific regulations on fire sprinklers, residential requirements, and fire warning for both existing and new buildings. At this time, a lot of the code was a substantially personalized code than what other towns had, and that document was pretty robust. Since then, these standards, which were milestones in 2003, are now incorporated in newer versions of codes, and a lot of that data is able to be removed from the ordinance that is covered in the codes themselves. This will reduce overall amendments and requirements of the code. The bulk code is also listed here, which will be turning to the international under the ICC code. General background on this process. Well, it's taken some time for the building department to get to this point. Throughout the years, we have been monitoring codes and updates. We've reviewed those code additions. We have drafted language and big notes, code trends, monitoring effects on the industry, as well as we've tracked desired amendments and changes that we're hoping to use in the future. It should be noted that currently adopted codes, adopted codes while outdated, have served the village relatively well. By now, even though they've served us relatively well, those outdated codes have not been able to embrace new technologies and practices within the district. The village is behind several code cycles, and architects commonly design to newer codes, assuming that we've updated along with other communities. This can create some confusion when they are looking to, you know, make plans and create these projects. Some divine professionals have not even been familiar with the bulk of codes or have been in the area. In addition, other communities in the surrounding area have updated their codes, and most of them have gone to the 2015 code that we're looking at. In addition, some of the state mandates that we do follow, the accessibility of plumbing codes have recently been updated and incorporating those with our adaptive. Well, most codes have substantial improvements over the last 16 years. One of the most significant would be the energy code. In 2009, the state adopted the Illinois Energy Code, but essentially the International Energy Conservation Code. They adopted that as their state mandated code, and so now we'll be able to take advantage of that within this latest code update. Continuing with some objectives of getting to a code update. Establishing uniformity and allowing projects to design to the most efficient standards out there. Utilizing those targeted amendments that were created over time specific to the community and incorporating best practices. Clarifying code language that created conflicts or confusion in the past and to promote consistency between all major and supplemental codes. And we'll take the standalone codes that were created from the building and fire codes and bring those back into the municipal ordinance for a more streamlined document, as well as that will improve accessibility to the public. This will also promote consistency through the village regulations and limiting redundancies and any gaps through the text. Information on the process and what we've done to evaluate these codes. We began this process by evaluating what other communities have used, as well as some of what our old amendments and code language stated. We've also reviewed past drafts and notes assembled over time. We did originally engage in a code consultant, a contracted code consultant, to work through amendments and strategy. Considering our relationship with this consultant, they were going to do it for a very reasonable cost, with the understanding that they were going to do this over time in between other projects, as we gave information. Unfortunately, they were becoming less available to go through this review process, and ultimately decided to move forward on our own to review and get this process done. We did, however, use some of their information, they did on fire codes, amendments, and recommendations that they created over time for us. We utilized those within the bulk of the process. Many meetings were hard held between departments. We were able to debate content, clarify intent and impact. It was also helpful in meetings to incorporate goals and a timeline in understanding what this adoption process would be. The new building codes that we're looking to adopt are listed here. As you can see, pretty much all international codes will be going to. Over time, these codes have been able to separate disciplines, have just been able to take disciplines out of the major codes like the fuel, gas, and energy conservation and existing building codes, and created them as their own standalone documents. These will all be, the fuel, gas, the energy conservation, and existing building code will all be incorporated for the first time. Some of the descriptions of what these are, the building code is for commercial and multi-family. The residential is for one, two-family only. Mechanicals for HVAC systems, heating, cooling, exhaust. Fuel gas is for natural gas piping, design, and supply throughout buildings and homes. And Seidel, the energy conservation code is a set of goals for, obviously, efficient construction and products within the home themselves. Property maintenance, we've had that adopted previously, but that was an old bulk of code. The national electric code is what we've had before. We're now updating to a newer version, just like the plumbing code and accessibility code. These are newer additions that were updated through the state that we are now adopting. And then you see here the Illinois Energy Conservation Code. So just to point in emphasis, these are the same codes. The state just took the international code and created its their own adaptive standard. They have regional amendments and requirements that we'll want to keep, but essentially, this is what we will be using. That's the document that we will be using. Couple of highlights, code changes that will be incorporated through the amendments and some of the ordinance documentation listed. We've got the permits, as we've had a number included before, what did and did not require a permit. We formalized the list within the ordinance to make that a little bit more clear. Foundations, this was an overall strengthening of some of the language for foundations for structures. One inclusion was for some of the steelworks, the packages requiring foundations for those structures. We also were able to clarify some safety fencing requirements for construction sites. Previously, we only had requirements for Previously, we only had requirements for new construction. That's now broadened to incorporate renovations, remodels, and the shapes of projects like that. Demolition notices, that was some improved language, as well as some of the demolition requirements themselves. We now have standards for temporary certificates of occupancy for projects. Been able to set timelines, goals, and what's required for that. Previously, the electric code did not have amendments in it whatsoever. There were no regional amendments, so we've now incorporated that. Swimming pool barrier requirements, we were using requirements from a commercial code for residential, and now this is going to be a more residential standard that other towns and communities utilize. That will be in the code as well. And with the Energy Code, that update does have some requirements that augment would kick in. People have heard of the former door test or duct leakage test. These are new structures that are required to provide certifications of some of those systems they've created to submit to the village before they finish the project. And then the existing building code, basically, that's for non-residential and historical buildings when they're going through renovations. Instead of utilizing the large international building code for new structures, it's a code generated, generally used for existing buildings to make it a little bit more easier for them to meet some of the standards. Minimum life safety standards. And generally, the gist of that code is, don't make it any less safe than you have right now. So hopefully that helps us out with some of our projects going forward. New fire codes, again, international is what's being transitioned here from the bulk of the life safety, and national fire codes were previously adopted. These are newer versions of both. There are some sections of the national fire codes that were removed that just don't apply to this community. It's a national code that has a lot of information that it just isn't applicable. We also took the standards for one and two-family out of the life safety code, as those are covered in international and some of the other codes that we're gonna be adopting. Couple of changes to note in these fire codes. Clarification on alarm monitoring. This basically is tightening up some language regarding radio equipment reporting to LTAC that wasn't exactly clear before. Fire alarms in existing apartment buildings, this was a code previously, but it was greater than three units, and now this has been increased to greater than four units. This is for existing apartment buildings. Fire sprinklers in existing single-family homes for near-total reconstruction. Generally, this was working on language for projects that were either a total reconstruction down to a foundation or substantial construction that generally is a way, I guess, of kind of stirring the system, you know, leaving one-wall tactic where they would not be required to either install fire sprinklers or even qualify as new construction. And so that language was definitely created and tightened up. That will apply to the building side as well. Some of those requirements now will kick in for projects that are that substantial. Did discuss at length, broadening that even to remodels, additions, increasing that to other single-family projects. We ultimately decided to not move forward with that, but that is something that we'd wanna come back to and try to have that discussion at a later day. It seemed with everything else that we were going through with these changes, it seemed like that was a lot to add, but definitely something we want to try to utilize in the future. Basically, a summary of a lot of the benefits that we're gonna be going through here. Maintain construction standards for safety of homes and promptly use for residents themselves. Newer codes incorporate building code technologies that we simply did not have before. There is a little bit more flexibility in design as these are international codes. Easier for design professionals, again, this speaks to uniformity and making it just a little bit simpler for people to design a project knowing what we are, what we have adopted. And amendments retain requirements necessary for the specific needs of our village. Some of these changes are best practices within the community. Some of them are utilized, even though they're not a requirement, by residents and contractors themselves, and now we've been able to put that in the book and be able to show people, you know, how to do it. And simply formatting for future changes is needed, you know. Coming to these new set of codes and creating a lot of this amendment language, when we wanna make changes in the future, it'll be a little bit more simplified to do that. And then here for next steps, essentially, obviously, we're given a presentation and some discussion if needed. You know, we are gonna have, obviously, the board and Kathy review this. Final ordinance and languages reviewed and approved to make sure we're ready for adoption. The next step here would be to place this on the agenda for the January 14 work session and if approved and ready to go for the adoption of 28th of January. Effective date, if all of that goes well, the effective date would be March 1st. Essentially, we did a lot of changes and help guides, a lot of our paperwork and website gearing up for this, and this essentially gets us ready for the next building season.
Thanks, Patrick. Patrick alluded to this, maybe without calling it out, but a lot of what we have done here is updated code language that is not going to have a significant impact as to what is really going on already. There are some changes, like when he mentioned the existing building code, there's gonna be some things that maybe commercial spaces didn't plan on changing, but if they're starting, if they're modifying the building, they're gonna have to upgrade a few things. But a lot of it, except for maybe some of the ones he talked about, like the foundation, which some people do already for larger garages, it wasn't a requirement, but it does make sense. So we don't anticipate as we go through, because there's a lot here, having a significant pushback on most anything. They're gonna be happy to build to the newer code, even though we have made amendments. Now, does that mean we could've missed something? Could be, and we'll come back here and correct it if it's something significant. But it should not create a much different, you know, much different view out in the field from contractors. I did, at the end of this, couple things. Patrick talked about the codes. Just if you're not familiar with it, you know, these code sets, what we've adopted here are actually stacks of codes now that have to be followed. They look cumbersome, but again, it's really not a change from what's going on in the field. Just to give you a feel of it, this is the code for single-family dwellings. When you build a house, this is the code. So it looks crazy, but there's a lot of things that are not applicable. There's other regions, there's very minute fine details that people use best practices and meet. And again, each of those codes he lists, the IBC, the building code, and the residential are pretty significant, but you also have the mechanical and all the other sets, and then the fire code. So they're pretty significant. But again, that's kind of the, I just wanted to show those, and if you have any interest, they're here based on the scope of what we're talking about. I did, though, wanna, you know, final or sum, at least our part of the presentation, on how we worked on this. Again, it's been contemplated for years with little tidbits added in here and there, and to be honest, we've been kind of pushed finally to the point and grabbed it enough, and with the, having Patrick on board, got to the point that we got here tonight. So I do wanna thank everybody that's in the, that was part of the effort. Patrick jumped on this, you know, since he started here, but in the last year, really started doing all the amendments and reviewing the codes. He truly was the lead on this whole project. Obviously, I gave some input, and I did a lot of the fire end of it, but again, it wouldn't have been without Patrick leading it. Emily kind of supervised us through the process. She is the one who was in all the meetings with us as we debated and tried to keep a timeline. We bounced stuff off Allison, who does all the permitting for the Building Department. Obviously, finance personnel help a lot up front, they field calls. But Allison, as we talked through stuff, even though she wasn't in all the meetings, hey, what do we do for this? How do we charge these permit fees? What are we missing here? You know, things like that, she's very helpful. I think she's been here 30 years and just has an enormous background with the village. And then Julia, who has really kept us on task. Are you gonna meet this week? Things like that. Yeah, we got a meeting, we had to blow it off, we had to change it 'cause of something else, but she kept us on task, kept Emily and the group on task to at least get to the point tonight where we think we have a pretty, pretty good document to take forward to, for adoption next month. Again, as Patrick alluded to, we're still gonna have Kathy review it. We may or may not hear some more information from our code consultant, and we'll fine-tune some of the language, which we believe mostly, again, is not content, but maybe grammar or, you know, the proper way to say something in adopting certain amendments. So again, thanks to everybody who was part of that, but that is the process we went through. Anything else, Patrick, from you? Again, as Patrick alluded to, our goal is, we will have it for further discussion next month, but we are open to any discussion at this point. Our goal is hopefully, again, because it is such a substantial document, we're gonna kind of rush it through and say, hey, we'll do the presentation, we're all good, you've had it five days, and that wasn't the best practice. So we really have about, you know, six to seven weeks before we formally adopt it between the next two meetings. So again, we'll take questions tonight if you're up for it. If not, it will be on the agenda at the work session if there are more specific detailed questions in January, with the hopes of adopting it at that second meeting, so.
Any, you know, with the enormity of this project, Patrick.
And everyone.
And everyone, we'll get to them. You know, with the change in our, in our village with the amount of construction going on with remodeling and tear downs, and now we've got businesses coming in, and the process and the success we've had, and the future looks bright, having you on board was a gem. You've been a great asset to us. I know that Chief is really grateful that you're here, because you've done a lot and you've taken an enormous amount of load off, and we've gone nothing but forward and up with you on board. And the enormity of this project and the amount of work that you and your staff has put together to get where we are today is just another feather in our cap as a village to show that we do have quality staff, quality people that work for us. Emily, again, you know, your help, and Allison, and Chief, and everyone else involved with this, it's a huge undertaking, and as Chief mentioned, you know, you started over a year ago in starting to formulate your thoughts and getting this all together. And again, Julia, you know, rounding everybody up and staying on top of it and making sure that it pushed forward. It's all this teamwork and working together, and that's what's so great about being up here and being able to work with all of you. And Sandy, your help is tremendous too by keeping them on board too. Anybody have any comments as far as the document? Yes, Trustee Laugner and then Trustee Zora.
You know, I just want to share with the conversations that I have with residents around the village and people that do work in the village, almost without fail, making reference to how much they enjoy working with our village Building Department. And I'm not, I know, you could probably pick any one given day and think, you got that from him, but there's, you know, the overall feedback of people that I, you know, contact with and have discussions with, the residents and people that do the work in the village, have nothing but good things to say about the consistency, the professionalism, and certainly, as you compare that to surrounding villages, not to make any particular comments about that, but we get good feedback that you guys are good to work with, and we appreciate that.
Trustee Zora.
Thank you. I wanted to say, this is the most opportune time to do this, and I'm very excited that we're stepping into the current century, so I'm very excited. I did have a question. I know we haven't really seen all the amendments and everything, but about the fire sprinklers in the existing single-family homes that are gonna be reconstructed. So if people are doing second-story additions, no, that's not gonna require sprinklers, okay?
It's really about someone taking...
Just leaving one wall?
All the way down to a foundation. And it's not about... We're trying to expand the sprinkler requirement. We're trying to eliminate loopholes.
Okay.
For someone to, you know, essentially rebuild an entire house. So no, a straight second-floor addition or back-end addition wasn't...
Okay.
I'm gonna be honest, I wrote some amendments that said that recently, and I pulled them back after some discussions with Patrick, and it got very hard to differentiate as to, you know, let's say you gut a house to put a second floor on. It's pretty opportune to put sprinklers in, and we're gonna live with these homes forever. That's why we may bring this back at a future date. Once a home is remodeled today and expanded double in size, there's never going back for 50, 60 more years. So it is bothersome, it was bothersome to me, to where I wrote the amendments, hey, maybe we should do this, and it's very convoluted. Even our language, we feel it's good, but it's really unique for trying to at least catch the complete rebuild, because we do lose this opportunity. But at the same point, the language was gonna be too convoluted, and it was gonna go beyond our original intent of just new construction.
Okay. That was it, thank you. And thank you for doing this, I think it is wonderful, and I always do hear compliments about our Building Department, so.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Any comments? Trustee Laugner?
So picking up on the commentary about, you know, renovation, second-story addition, so how does it handle a house that's razed and leaves one wall?
We believe the way we wrote our language, you will have to sprinkle it.
Sure. Okay.
That was really, that was the reason for it, essentially. And unfortunately, it's one of those, you know, everyone likes to kind of use other people's language or ordinances or things that they've created. There's really no one good definition out there to prevent that. And so we've had a couple of projects that have taken advantage of that, and ultimately spent more money and created more issues for themselves, but that's really the intent of what we're doing.
Again, Patrick, thank you, and kudos to you and everyone who is involved in this project. Trustee Zora, anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, moving on, Public Works Committee, Trustee Sheen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're gonna have a presentation to provide information to us on GIS and how it would benefit the village in the future. Geographical information systems, GIS, links databases to digital maps in a manner that makes data used by all village departments and the public more accessible. The benefit of GIS is to store and retrieve data more efficiently. GIS typically includes data associated with land parcels, such as pins, address, dimension, land use, zoning, structure, footprint, property photos, and utilities. GIS puts geographic data into a format that allows the data to create visual representations of infrastructures, community assets, and service needs. It also offers a way to view and analyze dynamic maps to enhance daily operations, improve decision-making, and effectively respond to customer resident requests. Tom Tomy, owner of Municipal GIS Partners, MGP, is on hand tonight. As a side note, MGP is currently working with LTAC to update the existing GIS files to come into compliance with the Next Gen 911. And with that, I'll kick it to you.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for allowing me to spend a few minutes with you. Rick has asked me to basically accomplish three things. First is to give you an overview of geographic information systems and as to what that is. Talk a little bit about the GIS Consortium and how 36 communities around Chicago are working together to make GIS work for them and making it affordable. And then finally, a little demo, not a lot tonight, but a little kind of taste of the technology and some of the offerings of the GIS Consortium. So first off, geographic information systems, GIS, is a type of information system that stores information in a geographic context. And why is that important to local governments? Why is that important to the village? It's because everything that we do at the village has a place, there's a location, and you have different departments that are using the information systems that apply most to their particular needs, and geography allows us to bring that information into a common fabric so that we can share information seamlessly across the organization. One of the things that I think often gets confused with GIS is that some folks think it's a map, and a map is certainly one of the things that a GIS can do, but a GIS is actually a database system that has a type of column that gives it space or a spatial component, and you can use that tabular information like you think of an Excel spreadsheet, and you can do all kinds of different analyses on it, and one of those things is to be able to make a map too. So geographic information systems that are well-formatted do not just do maps, they actually help integrate information systems across the enterprise. And I will... And I will take this opportunity to just reinforce that probably the most important thing that all of your departments share is address, and if, if address is, is high quality across all of your department enterprise systems, it can be rendered very easily into a map fabric and to have analysis done, okay? So, that, you have now graduated from GIS 101. Next, I want to talk about the GIS Consortium. 22 years ago, a group of communities and myself came together because we recognized that the over 250 villages and cities that surround the city of Chicago, not the big communities, but the smaller organizations need this type of technology, need a lot of technology, but how do you afford it when you have to do it entirely on your own? And these folks, with, with some perspective for me, came up with a model by which we standardize everything that we have in common across local government, and it doesn't change what communities do because all communities are different. The beauty of Chicago is the tapestry of Chicago and the communities and how they're different, but the data, the things that we do, we have a lot in common, so we're trying to standardize that in a geographic way so that we can accelerate outcomes and build technology that can be shared across all members. Today, the GIS Consortium consists of over 36 communities. It has never lost a member in its 22-year history, and we continue to grow. The GIS Consortium Board, which I do not represent, it's a separate public entity, where the private side of, of, of the organization looks very carefully at the types of members that they want to have coming onboard because they're looking for communities that are interested in innovation, they're looking for communities that are interested in, in sharing what they've learned and what they're doing with other communities, and they're interested, of course, in communities that are trying to, to use technology in a way to have an impact on their residents. At the core of the GIS Consortium, the model that I created back in 1998, because like a lot of things in local government, what makes us successful are the people, we just heard a great commentary on that for your own staff, that people drive success, and there's specialization for any technology, and GIS is really no different. And small communities have a hard time affording all of that specialization because if you need an analyst and a GIS manager and a developer, right away that, that information system gets very, very difficult to, to afford. So, what we did with the model was to say, communities need a GIS manager, but they don't need to pay for it on a full-time basis, that role can be shared across the membership, and same, same thing with the developers and some of the analysts. You have direct staff here working at the community, but a lot of the staff you don't see because they're busy creating the standards and the data models that support all 36 members. So, the model when it was first created was really trying to create efficiency around these three key components, staffing, software, and infrastructure. As I mentioned, staffing was where we started, how do we make that model shareable and efficient? So, that helped us reduce costs and we think reduced risk as well. From there, we moved on to software. We now share software, the consortium actually owns many of the licenses that you will take advantage of, and we, and we optimize those licenses because if, if we didn't share them, each community would have to own them on the server side. This way, we have essentially eight cores or eight servers, I don't want to get too technical here, being shared by 36 communities where generally you'd have to buy one each. And of course, we're, we're creating that same efficiency on the hardware side as well by driving what we can to the cloud, but making sure that your data is local and accessible by your staff. The consortium is a public entity. It is an entity formed under state statute, I don't remember, but it, it encourages local governments to come together to work in collaboration, and that's how the consortium was originally put together. It selects its private vendors for, for the services that they need. MGP has been fortunate enough to, to be the professional service provider now for 21 years. They also contract for servers and technology and also for aerial photography and photogrammetric mapping if that's something a community wants. It's just less expensive if 36 communities do things together than just one doing it on their own. The other thing too, I think it's important to, to recognize as, as a potential new member is every member has one vote, regardless of the size of the community and regardless of when you came in, you have one vote in terms of the initiatives and the decision-making processes of the consortium. So, it was, it was really, I believe, built to last. One of the, a lot of solutions that I could demonstrate tonight, and I'm not going to do all of them, but what's great about the consortium, I believe, is because we've standardized, any application that gets created can be shared. Common applications that are occurring across the consortium today are what we call collector applications, applications where public works folks want to go out in the field and collect something. It could be a, a recent event, it could be a new type of infrastructure they want to manage, and that collector app might have been created by Tinley Park or someone else in the consortium, but because it had been created by MGP is automatically and for free available to all other members. Doesn't mean you have to use it, it just means that what we're doing is sharing those applications. These are the, the, the main ones that we create, MGP creates for the consortium, and I'd like to demonstrate a couple of these, time permitting. I look forward to coming back, hopefully someday with the big screen and all the technology to look a lot nicer.
Exactly.
So, this first product, and I am starting with mapping because again, GIS, I think most people think of mapping systems, but I am going to then segue into other ways that we're using exactly the same data. One of our core beliefs at MGP is never to duplicate data, right? Create it once and visualize it through a number of different applications. This is a product, it's interesting, if I was demoing to the village in six months, I probably wouldn't be showing this particular application. This application is actually being replaced by the consortium right now, we're working on that, but this is the best I have tonight to show you. And what I'm going to do here, and again, I think you're, you're probably very familiar with Google Maps and, and different types of online mapping applications, the difference here is that this has really been customized to local government, so you're going to see as we zoom in, just like with Google, you're going to begin to see additional layers show up, okay? More detail. Highland Park has prioritized these layers, you may or may not, but most of these layers are very typical for our members. So far, it looks like Google Maps, right? Nothing terribly interesting here, but now I'm going to turn on utility lookup, and I want to take a look at the water distribution system, okay? So, now, and this is also avail, available in the field through our asset management application. Now, again, I, I said earlier, this is not just a picture, right? It's actually a database. So, I'm actually going to click on this water main, and a list of attributes, and it's hard to see because of the resolution, but you can see here that a list of attributes came up for that water main. It's a 10-inch diameter ductile iron. That means a lot to public works officials, doesn't mean a whole lot to a technologist, but it means a lot to them. It also means because in a database, that I could actually query the entire database for all ductile iron pipes. I could actually ask the database to give me ductile iron pipes that were put in place before 1974. I could also then start bringing in soils and other analysis to help understand what capital improvement plans might look like in the future, okay? There's a bunch of other things in this application, but that was the, the core thing I wanted to show. The next thing I want to show is now moving, now we're using exactly the same type of data, the same data. And I'm going to go over to River Forest. One of the things that we've learned over the years is that not everybody wants a map. That's a little bit hard for the GIS professionals to hear, but that's just the facts of it. So, what we've created is a widget technology that allows a resident to go to the community website, any of the members, operating with one hand here, I'm good, I think, I think I got it. And keying address in, because they may not want a map, they just want to know the basic services, and because this is a geographic context, we can bring back information about what the pin number is, what the township is, voting precincts, zoning information about that property, and, and again, this is where your staff, I think, can really be effective because they're getting all their information in one place, click on the pin and go directly, directly to the county record.
Thanks.
Okay? The last thing I want to demo, because this is something that all of our communities are increasingly wrestling with, is, is capital improvement planning. And it's not that, it's not that we don't know what we need to do, it's really about how we tell the story to the residents so that they can understand why it is we're doing these things. And all of the communities have these maps, I'm bringing up Highland Park largely because that's where my career started, was in Highland Park, but this map is a, is a resident-facing application that allows the community to tell the story about the different things going on around the city. And what you can see here is, it's hard to see, is a green line, which has some bridge reconstruction going on, levee road replacement. What you're seeing is, is the line and then off to this, off to the side, an explanation, and I think some of the maps actually provide the contact information, I might have missed that earlier, of who the, who the project manager is, so the resident can contact if they want. Not everybody's doing that, but again, you can customize it any way you want, but the mapping data is exactly the same data that we saw in the earlier product. So, that concludes it. Did I, did I hit on all three things?
Excellent.
Okay, good, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Who wants to go first? Trustee Sheen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, in the, in the query that you ran for the water, does it, does it show like the location of, say, the eight-inch water main? Would, like if Ricks Cruise get a water, hit water main, would they be able to just pull it up, know exactly where it's located, what they're dealing with?
Yeah, exactly. Again, I, I probably should have explained more. All of that mapping is actually tied to the ground within a foot and a half of its actual survey location, so it's, if you, if you had a GPS device to navigate yourself, you could literally walk on top of that facility.
Yeah, that would increase production and cut down on a lot of downtime. It's good.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that, if Tom would zoomed in even more, you know, you had a little bit more spatialness there, you would have seen it actually more realistic and where the location would be, and you can even have your bends, your valves, you know, you know, we get a snow gun and we have some valves that are up in a parkway, you know, you got two feet of snow on them, I mean, we should be able to actually go and physically walk right to them without, with having this.
Right. Now, that's awesome. Long overdue.
Oh, sure.
Trustee Zora?
Thank you. I did have a question. Western Springs and La Grange are, are already on this, is that correct?
Western Springs is not part of the consortium, La Grange is.
Oh, they're not, okay. Okay. And that doesn't...
They are part of, they did partner with LTAC though as part of MGP.
Okay.
Update their GIS map files for the Next Gen 911 system, so really, we are partnered, and Western Springs has their own in-house, but they are utilizing MGP to help clean up the data.
So, all three of the villages together, it's not going to make any difference if we're not on, all in the same, I don't know, consortium, I don't know what you call it?
Yeah.
It won't, it won't matter? With both LTAC, I'm asking, I guess, because they're, they're all going to be using this too.
They're going to use the base maps, you know, that's what they're trying to do in the address locations and things like that, that's what LTAC is trying to clean up for the address list, but, you know, we can piggyback off of that base map and start doing the water and the sewer and, you know, electrical, any of that kind of stuff and add to that existing base map.
Okay. And then, I just wanted to say too, as someone who utilizes these for other municipalities trying to find zoning information, they are very convenient and it's really nice to have it all there. That's all, thank you.
Yes, Trustee Laugner?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this is a massive amount of data, so I assume this sits on, on the cloud, and just from a security standpoint, what, what do you use for security and backup, you know, how do you do disaster recovery and uptime availability? I don't get all the questions, but...
Yeah, and those, yeah, and those documents are available. All 36 members have professional IT services, either outsourced and on staff, and we're constantly working with them to make sure that we're holding the data secure. I mean, the, the data is the most important part of this. The production set and, and what you're seeing tonight is in the cloud, but there's always a copy local as well in case there's an internet outage and you still have an EOC to, to stand up, so that data is always local as well.
And you have, I assume you have uptime availability commitments and...
We have, we have an SLA that we, we work to maintain. We've been good most years, this year we're a little bit, just being candid, a little bit off for 98%, so, but yeah, we work to, to stay on top of that and we work with the board to make sure we're doing that, yeah.
And you manage the cloud?
We do, the, the assets are actually owned by the GIS Consortium, but we manage it for them.
So, Tom, I mean, this is, this is high-tech now, so, I mean, it can help with fire and police and, and public works. How is all this information gathered? Is it, is it through your group and our group providing it hands-on with both? I mean, how is all, I mean, it's a ton of information, how do you get all that?
It is a ton of information, and it is in partnership with your staff, for sure. We have onboarded now 36 communities, so we've seen everything, we think, and what we do during the onboarding process is to take those practices that we've learned and to work with your staff to get the very best data in. What we do believe though is local government has a, has a tradition of gathering a lot of data, dare I say, that may not be as important as they may think it is, and what we constantly are talking about is how are you going to use that data? Let's not, let's not collect it if there's not a plan to maintain it and a use for it. And it's really, it's, it's something that I think once all of us get around that, the task gets, gets more manageable, but it is in partnership.
And it, and it appears that, that, I mean, there's an entry level and then there's, you can get just crazy with all this stuff about the information you want to receive and input and gather, so, I mean, are there different levels that you come in on?
No, the, the consortium model was built to be a staffing level that was constant. And all of our communities have maintained their original allocation, a few of them have gone up a little bit, and that's how the founders wanted it, because actually, Dave Fairman, who was the Director of Finance in Highland Park, reminded me all the time that, Tom, the thing that I don't want to be talking to my council about are big budgetary items, let's get it flat, let's figure out how we build it, so it, and staff it in a way that's consistent, so that's, a lot of work went into the allocation model, so the size of the community actually determines the amount of staffing and responsibility, and that model, having been around now for 21 years, still works very well.
Well, you know, I had the privilege of sitting in when you presented to the staff, and it was very, very impressive and just as impressive tonight, so thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so next step is...
Work session. The next step is we will bring membership to the consortium through the evaluation process as part of the budget process. We have preliminary quotes for this level of service, as Tom mentioned, it's very flat. We just started the budget process, we don't know yet whether or not we can sustain the annual cost of this program, we would like to do it particularly as we think about the benefits that it would bring to mapping out our water and sewer utility, we think it would be a tremendous benefit, so we'd like to include the evaluation of whether or not this is something we can move forward with in the, in the year 2020 as part of the budget process, so that's what we'd like to do, continue to bring information to the board as part of that process, but really, we've just started to gather information related to the upcoming budget process, so we're trying to fit it in, and a lot of it depends upon how our current budget is performing and what we think next year's budget might cost and whether or not that's going to make sense, but you're, you're all going to see all of that and, and determine whether or not this is something that we can... that we can move forward with. Certainly, each of you, as you have watched the presentation tonight, you see the capabilities of it, but it's really a lot of information to understand. So I think it's important that, any questions that you have related to the technology, the type of services that are included, the staffing model that's been talked about very briefly tonight, to the extent you have questions regarding any of that and you're not getting that information from staff, ask us those questions. Ask us whatever questions that you have. We'll try to make sure that we're including it in the budget process. But if we miss something, we want to make sure that we're getting that information out to everyone. Membership, as Tom mentioned, they've been around for a long time, and they have 38 communities, and no one's left. So this is a commitment. Huge benefits, particularly as you're planning for your critical infrastructure, right? Planning into the future. And it takes a long time to build these maps. I don't know how long it would take to build a base map for water, but I'm guessing it takes about a year, right? For water? Oh, you're smiling, Tom.
It really depends on what you have. I don't mean to make this more...
So it takes a long time to build?
If it's in certain formats, it's going to go quicker than others, so it's hard for me to say that with confidence, but it's going to take a lot of effort on that.
So, bless you. So the information is critical, mapping it out, you know, pretty close to the exact location about everything, every connection, understanding what's the content of the pipe, you know, where is it located? How are areas of the village being serviced? Having that available at your fingertips, this is all great stuff, but it's a commitment. So we have to make sure that we're asking all the questions, sharing all the right information as we move toward the budget review process. So that's the next step.
Okay.
And we'll work with Tom in making sure that we pull that information and distribute it to the board. And we'll include it, Mr. President, we'll include it, make sure that we include it in a tab within the budget binder.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Julia. Thank you, Tom. Trusty Sheen, continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next, we have the intergovernmental agreement for the Displanes River Trail Bike Paths South Extension. The purpose is to approve a resolution for an IGA between local area taxing bodies to assist with the Phase 1 study for our regional bike path, Displanes River Bike Trail South Extension, which includes the 31st Street and Maple Avenue intersection. General background, the Forest Preserve District of Cook County and Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning have completed a study to install a gapped section of the Displanes River Trail South Extension. A portion of this trail extension is proposed to run along 31st Street from First Avenue to Prairie in Brookfield, which will link the Salt Creek Trail System. Brookfield is seeking potential grant funding to extend this trail system to Maple Avenue. La Grange Park is named in the IGA and resolution to partner with the group to study the intersection of 31st and Maple for safety-related improvements for pedestrians and vehicle traffic, including dedicated turn lanes. Staff reviewed crash data from the police department. For between 2014 and 2018, there have been 30 documented accidents at the village portion of the intersection. The village portion of this study includes a quarter or 25% of the 31st and Maple study. The budget impact of this study is $2,100 plus any ineligible expenses not covered by the grant. More specifically, the village's cost for participating in Phase 1 study is our portion of the local share, 20% of covered cost at $2,100, and our portion, 2% of the aggregate total of ineligible costs, which are currently estimated to be $8,000, for which our share would be $160. The village has funding available in the 31st Street Maple Avenue Business District Fund for these costs. The Phase 1 study for the 31st Street Maple Avenue intersection is an eligible, is an eligible cost in the 31st Street Maple Avenue Business District Plan, as one of the stated goals of the district plan is to increase safety of vehicles and pedestrians moving through the district. Staff recommends approval of the resolution at tonight's meeting. Therefore, Mr. President, I make a motion, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement by and between the villages of Brookfield, Illinois, the village of La Grange Park, Illinois, the village of Lyons, Illinois, the village of Riverside, Illinois, and the Cook County Forest Preserve District for the Displanes River South Extension.
Second. Motion, second discussion. Trusty Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, with the amount of accidents provided, we can't go wrong. If our portion is so small that it's a no-brainer that we should visit this to increase the safety at that intersection.
Any other comments from the board? Sandy, call the roll.
Trusty Messick?
Yes.
Trusty Sheen?
Yes.
Trusty Casera?
Yes.
Trusty Lotner?
Yes.
Trusty, sorry, Trusty Zora?
Yes.
Trusty Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you. And next, lastly, I have payment approval for sidewalk and curb replacement related to utility repairs. The purpose is to recommend approval of payment to Globe Construction for necessary concrete repairs damaged due to utility work. General background, during the course of a year, many utility repairs are made to our underground infrastructure. While making repairs, unavoidable collateral damage occurs to concrete curbs, sidewalks, or aprons. Public Works compiles a list in it, a list to enlist a concrete, man, rented tongue, turn it back, to enlist a concrete contractor to make the necessary repairs. On September 10, 2019, Public Works presented to the board a contract extension with Globe Construction for the annual sidewalk replacement program, and the village board approved a not-to-exceed amount of $39,500, utilizing the pricing from 2016. Prior to Globe starting the sidewalk project, an inquiry was made asking if they would honor the same pricing structure as the sidewalk program for utility restorations, which they agreed to as long as the work was done at the same time. Globe Construction recently completed the sidewalk replacement program and the utility restorations. Upon completion, Globe submitted their invoice for the concrete repairs due to utility repairs in the amount of $9,806.25. Since the utility repairs are standalone, staff is seeking village board approval of the payment separately as this work is not related to the sidewalk program and not confuse the two. Funds for utility repairs are budgeted within the Water Distribution Fund, 0344-3308, Water Main Maintenance. Staff recommends approving the payment to Globe in the amount of $9,806.25. This is for discussion and action. Therefore, Mr. President, motion to authorize the village manager to approve the payment to Globe Construction for concrete utility repairs in the amount of $9,806.25.
Motion, second.
Second.
Trusty Sheen?
Cost of doing business, Mr. President, has to be safe and have those items repaired. I see no reason why we shouldn't approve this.
Any other comments from the board? Sandy, call the roll.
Trusty Messick?
Yes.
Trusty Sheen?
Yes.
Trusty Casera?
Yes.
Trusty Lotner?
Yes.
Trusty Zora?
Yes.
Trusty Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sandy.
That concludes Public Works this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trusty Sheen. Moving on to other reports, village manager, Julia.
Mr. President, I have just one item to report. This week, we are having a holiday luncheon for the village, for the staff, and for the officials. That luncheon is happening tomorrow, and it also includes an ugly sweater party, and that is strongly encouraged. So it's tomorrow downstairs in the room. Hope to see you all there. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Julia. Moving on, I have one, a couple items. Number one, the tree lighting was a huge success on Friday night. I want to thank staff, and I was remiss in probably recognizing and thanking the most important department and people that were there, and that's Public Works. And Rick, you and your staff, what you did that night with the pit and the lighting, and I think it was the best one we've ever had. So thank you to you and your staff for all the hard work you did. LTTV, thank you for all that you do for our broadcast throughout the year. We want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I have one action item, and that's an amendment to employment. The village board met in executive session to review the performance of the village manager following her eighth year and determined that an adjustment to the employment agreement is warranted. Included with the memorandum is an amendment to the employment agreement consistent with the village board's determination. Julia Sedia has served as village manager since July 2011 and began her employment with the village in July of 2008. Therefore, I ask for a motion.
I move to authorize village president to execute an amendment to the employment agreement.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? I will just add that we are blessed to have Julia on board. Julia, as I read, has been with us for a while now, since 2011, and you can see the great strides with her staff on her that we've made in the village with all the accomplishments of infrastructure and economic development, and certainly with a great person such as Julia leading the helmet. It takes a great team to get that all accomplished, and she has put that together remarkably. So Julia, thank you for all that you do.
It is absolutely my pleasure, it's all you.
Sandy, call the roll.
Trusty Messick?
Yes.
Trusty Sheen?
Yes.
Trusty Casera?
Yes.
Trusty Lotner?
Yes.
Trusty Zora?
Yes.
Trusty Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Sandy. I want to thank Sandy personally for filling in tonight. At the last minute, she does a great job, and thank you for being here and for all that you do. Anything from the village clerk?
No report, Mr. President.
Okay. On behalf of the village board and the staff, we want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and we'll move in, ask for a motion to move into executive session.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining in accordance with five ILCS 120/2C, not to return to open session until our regularly scheduled meeting, January 14th at 7:30.
A motion, a second. Sandy, call the roll.
Trusty Messick?
Yes.
Trusty Sheen?
Yes.
Trusty Casera?
Yes.
Trusty Lotner?
Yes.
Trusty Zora?
Yes.
Trusty Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
And we'll move into executive session.